Okay. Good evening. This work session of the ISD 279 School Board is being held in the Forum Room of Educational Service Center at 11293rd Avenue North in Maple Grove. The work session is being audio recorded. The recording will be made available on the district website within two business days after the work session has ended. The intent of the school board work session is to allow for school board discussion of topics. Work sessions do not include an opportunity for audience members to address the board. To acknowledge attendance this evening, I'll ask that all present at the table state their name, starting with my left.
Jackie Mosketa-Jones, school board member.
Heather Douglas, school board member.
Thomas Brooks, school board member.
Brian Stevenson-Hall, community education.
Kelly Parcourt, Assistant Superintendent for Secondary.
Laurel Anderson, Executive Director of Human Resources.
John Morstad, Executive Director of Finance and Operations.
Valerie Doson, District Lobbyist.
Steve Fless, Assistant Superintendent for Elementary.
Kivala, Executive Director of Community Relations.
Anthony Penner, Executive Director of Technology.
Sarah Mitchell, school board member.
Amy Moore, General Counsel.
Tamara Grady, She/Her/Hers, school board member.
Kim Heil, Superintendent.
And I, Tanya Prince Simons, school board member and president. The purpose of the school board work session is to build trust and teamwork, to exchange information, and when applicable, to provide direction in order to facilitate efficient and effective decision making at regular board meetings. I'll now ask Dr. Howell for her check-in for this work session.
Thank you, Vice Chair Simons. Appreciate it. And good evening, everyone. We're going to get started right away today on our 2024 legislative platform, and I'll hand it over to John Morstad, who can introduce your family, introduce our guests.
Well, thank you, Dr. Howell. So today Valerie Doson, our district's lobbyist, is with us. We're going to basically cover two things. Valerie's going to give us a legislative update on where things are at coming into the session from last year and preparing for the next, and then we'll walk through the draft version of our legislative program.
Thanks, John, and thanks for having me tonight. The 2024 legislative session begins February 12, 2024. This next session will be six weeks shorter than the 2023 session, which is a significant chunk of time in the legislative world. We run on a biennial cycle here in Minnesota for our legislative sessions, and the first year of this session is always the odd-numbered year, and that's the year that the legislature and the governor agree to a two-year state budget. And so that is why they meet from January through the middle of May. The second year of the biennial cycle is typically not a year that they have a significant budget bill. They may have a supplemental budget bill depending on whether or not there is a budget surplus. They also almost always work to pass a bonding bill, and they tend to have a lot of policy items that they work through. Again, the supplemental budget bill really depends on what's happening with the budget forecast. I might add, too, that the second year of the biennium, they do not need to do anything. They can go home without passing a budget. The first year of biennium, they have to pass a state budget, but the second year, there's absolutely nothing that they need to do. Even if there is a budget surplus, they can leave that money on the bottom line without passing a budget. The lobbyists types like me are all waiting for the budget forecast, which is going to be released tomorrow. We do get periodic updates from Minnesota Management and Budget, and over the course of the interim, we have been -- the reports have indicated that more money is coming in than originally anticipated, and it could be as much as -- the most recent update showed we brought in 820 million more than anticipated. And also, last session, when the legislature adjourned, they left about $1.5 billion on the bottom line, so it could show that we do have a budget surplus. Now, a couple caveats are added to that, though. That $1.5 billion that they've left on the bottom line, the legislative leaders have said that is for a bonding bill. They want to use that to pay for things like roads, bridges, capital, infrastructure. And also, the legislature and the governor passed a bill last session that put inflation back into the forecast. So I'm presuming when we see the budget forecast tomorrow, some of this money that's a surplus will be taken off the top to account for inflation. In all the different conversations I've had with legislators and leadership, they all indicate they suspect that any money coming in this next session will be considered one-time, and very little would be ongoing. So we'll be looking for a couple things tomorrow. One is, what's the size of the budget forecast? What is taken off for inflation? And what is going to be considered structural versus one-time? I would also note that I've had a couple conversations. I've been at events where the Speaker of the House has been, and she has indicated that they are committed to passing a bonding bill, and she's hoping session is quick. We'll see. I've been around for 27 years, and they finished early once. Once the budget forecast comes out, we'll have a sense tomorrow. We'll hear from the leaders and the governor about what they might be thinking for session. But the next kind of stage of this process is the governor will release what he wants to do for a bonding bill in the next few weeks or month, and then the governor, towards the beginning of the session, will get a better idea of what the governor's budget recommendations are. I also suspect, depending on the forecast, that we most likely would see a lot of one-time proposals from the governor, if any. We do expect a few issues to take front and center, whether it's either something the legislature wants to look at, or I think educational organizations are really going to bring to the forefront. The first item is the issue of school resource officers. The chairs in the House and Senate have indicated they are going to have informational hearings on that issue at the beginning of session, so I think there'll be a lot of attention focused on that. I think from the various educational organizations, you'll hear a couple main things. The first one is ongoing funding to support programs like the unemployment insurance requirement, as well as the REED Act, also maybe paid family leave and earned sick time, which John will discuss on the platform. I think you will also hear all of the education organizations talk about additional funding on the formula, specifically 2% on the formula. Pensions is another issue. They made some progress last session in trying to equalize the disparity between the rule of 90, teachers who qualify for rule of 90, and the teachers that don't, and I know that that will be a push by some organizations. Then, just kind of looking to the makeup of the legislature, it's an election year for the House next November. The Senate and the governor are not up for an election, so I think we'll see some retirements announcements coming as session unfolds. We have already -- two members have already announced their retirement, and today there is a special election in Eagan. There was a state representative, Ruth Richardson, resigned, so there's a special election to fill that seat. Depending on the outcome, it won't change the makeup of the majority, but if the seat is currently held by a Democrat, if the Democrat candidate doesn't win, there would be a one-seat gate for that minority. The Senate is not up for reelection, but there is a member of the Senate who announced that they are running for Congress, so if that happens, there would be a special election next fall, but we'll worry about that then. And then also, just kind of for the timelines for session, session will end, I think, I forgot to look up the exact date, but I think it's May 21st. It's whatever that first third Monday in May is. They will break. They normally take a week-long break for the Easter, Passover holidays, but this year they will be taking three shorter breaks, one for Easter, one for Eid, and one for Passover. That's it.
Before we move to the platform, any questions on the update? Okay. So, should be in your packet, but we'll go through as well our legislative priorities. So the general format of the document is very similar to last year. One side has a number of demographic pieces for the district, and then the other side we're looking at kind of highlights the district's commitments at the beginning and then goes into what each of the categories of priorities that we have identified. So starting with the stable predictable funding, the recommended priorities are increase the general fund formula by an additional 2%, specifically for fiscal year '25. So current legislation gives us 2%. We're asking for two more, so it would match up to this year's 4% that we're receiving. Link all categorical funding to inflationary increases in the general education formula. Today, almost categorical funding pieces are static, so they never change. So as inflation goes, we lose every year, we lose purchasing power to that inflationary change. Increase local optional revenue to $920 per pupil and link to the basic formula. Today, that number is $724, has been static for, I believe, since 2018, something like that. So it catches it up, and then we link it to go forward. Fully fund the special education cross-subsidy. Today, we are at 44% funded, and then it steps to 50% in 2027, so we're asking that it just be funded at 100%. And then provide funding for new programs that were adopted in the 2023 legislative session. And I'll clarify, and this is where it's a draft, so there's some additional language we need to drop in here. Unemployment insurance is funded with a pot of money today, but that is not ongoing money. It's just a one-time fund. So the request would be ongoing funding for unemployment insurance, funding for paid family medical time, earned sick -- how do you say that? Safe and sick time, and then to fully fund the REED Act and the requirements to come with it. Our second main category is workforce shortage, so addressing workforce shortage. Expand programs and incentives to attract, develop, and retain teachers of color. Reduce special education paperwork requirements and allow teachers to spend more time with students, and remove barriers and provide incentives to address the shortage of teachers, education service professionals, and other staff. The next major category is enhancing school safety and support for mental health. Increase the Safe Schools funding to support mental health needs of scholars and staff, and expand the allowable uses of long-term facility maintenance funding to include the modern patients and buildings to enhance specifically safety and security. And then finally, this kind of standard we always have on there is reduce mandates. Fully fund or repeal all existing unfunded mandates, and refrain from adding any new unfunded mandates. It's a wish, doesn't happen very often, but we like to keep it on the platform. So I guess with that, I will turn it back to Superintendent Heil or the vice chair to address questions and recommendations.
Any questions or comments, reactions to the platform, recommendations for changes?
Honestly, not a lot, because this all feels very familiar, but I think the one thing that just comes to mind for me is a lot of these categories are broad, and, you know, in a lot of ways, that's intentional. But if any of these are priorities for our district, I'm wondering if at some point we need to pull groups together to actually come up with specific recommendations for legislators to consider, you know, particularly related to addressing the workforce shortage. All of those are very broad, so, you know, if there are some additional or specific recommendations that our district wants to bring forward, or the community wants to bring forward in terms of movement barriers or expanding programs, I'm wondering if at some point we need to take the lead on that. But other than that, you know, like I said, none of this seems new, so.
No, the only thing you see that came off are things that the legislature provided for us last year, so we can say, you know, rather than saying, hey, link to inflation, they did that, so we can take that off. But it's just, you gotta replace with something else.
Yeah. I'm a little uncomfortable with repealing all existing unfunded mandates. Is that something that we require to have in there?
This is just a draft, so we're asking that for me.
It seems ambiguous as well, because in part, like, we outlined exactly what unfunded things, paid family leave, sick and safe time, unemployment insurance, and the REED Act that we want further funding on. So it seems like that's more specific to what we're asking for, rather than just sort of ambiguous repealing all existing unfunded mandates.
So I like repeal, because the above language is specific to the 2023 items that are very significant, and at the delegate assembly for the Minnesota School Board Association, many of these did pop up specifically as new mandates. But I think using language repeal continues to keep it front and center, that if there are going to be new mandates, they should be funded, and things that are currently unfunded should either be funded or repealed. So I think that's consistent with what we've had in the past, and I think clarifies beyond 2023 language.
I personally agree with that. I think just the headline, reduce mandates, in general, we're constantly having all these new mandates every time something comes out, and I feel like that's one of the things that hinders our ability to do the work that we need to do, because we're so busy trying to fulfill these requirements versus focusing on the needs of our district.
I would like to request that the SRO issue is on here. As was mentioned, it's a top issue that's going to be before the legislature, and to remain silent on it seems wrong, being that it's a main issue. I know that there's multiple board members who have interest in that. Additionally, at the delegate assembly, it was passed to support on MSBA legislative platform with all but one member voting to approve that. So it is a significant issue, it's well-supported across the state, and I think it's worth a discussion. While we did discuss it in the past, that was related to advancing it to the MSBA, whereas I think it's worth a discussion and a vote on it for our specific district. So I would like to request that that's added, personally.
I feel like we've already had that conversation, and it was a good conversation. I am willing to put that on our legislative agenda, but feel free to call and vote on that if you like.
Well, it's interesting, because what gets on the agenda or on the platform is what we vote on. So if it's on there, both members can vote to remove it before they approve for it or approve it, but I think if there's substantial board interest, items of interest deserve to be on this to start with, but we haven't had a particular protocol for that.
I think it also fits, obviously, right, enhance school safety and support mental health. Having support for RSROs and adding that to our platform is directly linked to so many of our strategic priorities.
Yeah, I would love to see that as a priority as well.
I'm also uncomfortable with the word mandates. It seems like it's really kind of taken on this sort of like political spin, and really what we're asking for is about legislation. Mandate has a value-based feeling to it, and one of the things, lists I saw of the many mandates as they were considered was allowing students who are graduating to use the American eagle feather if they were part of the American Indian community, and that's really not an unfunded mandate, it's just something that helps students. It doesn't cost anymore, and so I feel like the word mandate has really been thrown around so politically that I feel uncomfortable with having that on this as well. What other word would describe? Legislation. That's really what we're asking. Bills are legislation. That's what we're passing. It's not mandates, but bills, and then ultimately legislation. It means the same thing, but it doesn't have that political flavor to it. Well, if it means the same thing, how's it a problem? I'm not understanding, like... Because mandates has become a very political term, and the... Everything on here is in the process. It's legislation. Well, we can disagree with this, but that's what my feeling is.
Are there any other words that people might suggest that refer to requirements that we must implement, must implement? Because legislation's not, maybe things that are required or not required, so I think we could be open to ideating on that.
Honestly, I just use that from the last few years. Just let it carry on.
Yeah.
Would there be a word, Valerie, that comes to your mind, other things? Not to put you on the spot.
I need to think through that.
I think MSBA says mandates, which is, we often adopt the language from MSBA's platform.
Yep. That's very typical on the AMSD platform. I haven't seen the Maslow graph yet, but it's a verbiage that the legislature is familiar with.
So what you're saying is mandates is the language that the legislature would use to understand what we mean by this?
Would be one way, yes.
Okay. What are the other ways?
Legislation would be another way. Requirements.
We have the seven of them listed.
Yeah. Requirements, requirements.
If it's on the MSB and MSBA, I'd be inclined to use their language. It's not our language, it's common, this language, I'd be inclined to keep that. Is there, are there any other comments, suggestions, recommendations?
I don't know. So I'm processing, but I don't have a ton of comments at this point. I don't have any sort of reactions to the word mandate, I'm good with it, or any variation thereof. And then, as far as the SROS, I mentioned in the beginning that there will be hearings for SROS, so it feels unnecessary to add to our legislative platform, but I don't feel particularly strongly about it.
I think as we reflect on the past, there have been a history of topics that have come up, such as like free lunches for all, that we've known were going to be evaluated by the legislature, yet we still add them to our platform because it is a priority, and we want to signal that we also support that. So I just don't agree with that as being a reason why we wouldn't do something. I think that it's really important that we use our legislative priorities in our platform to signal what we need as a district, and it only benefits our case for the legislature when AMSD and MSBA and other school districts have similar needs. It's signaling to the state that, hey, we all need this, we're all asking for this. So not putting it on there, I don't think is going to be a benefit to our community in any way. In fact, I think it's a disservice.
Valerie, does AMSD have something on there about SROS?
They do. Their statement is clarify language related to the use of physical restraints to ensure the safety of students and staff. And then, I have not seen the MSBA resolutions, but on their platform, it says, ensure school districts, their staff, and partners in school safety and security have clear guidelines and group definitions related to the use of force to resolve dual and conflicting standards.
I would like to see that added with consistent language to MSBA or AMSD.
Same.
But also, I think just the safety is number one, so I think that's a top priority.
Any other questions? Oh, go ahead, Dr. Howell.
I'm not sure. This is my first. I'm not sure how that works. Is there suggestions, then it's added? I'm just trying to find, because I want to give you some idea of how.
Historically, we've had a preference to deferring to school board member interests. In the past, we've had, when we get to the vote, we've had discussion as to, I may not support this item, but I'm voting for it, or I'm not voting for it. So we don't always have 100% agreement on every single item in it. Right now, we're clearly, potentially have different interests on that item on it. We don't, obviously don't vote here.
Right.
Dr. Howell, you mentioned that you had met with students recently, and students had brought this up as an issue. Would you be willing to comment on that?
Well, one of the things, it was the Superintendent Student Advisory Group that was last week, and one of the things, and going around the room, which the babies are saying, like, what's working well, or what's, things they want to add, besides some other things they were adding, every high school, it was Brick and Mortar High School, had mentioned themselves at how they were missing relationships with the officers. So they even named some of the officers. I want to do that. I don't know if I can do that or not, but they even named some of the officers, and just they've missed seeing them in the hall, or missed having lunch with them, or having them available when they needed them, so.
So in this work session, we just, we provide recommendations and guidance based on this, and then the staff will take that into input, into consideration, and bring back another recommendation. So it's really kind of, you've received our commentary and input, and so it goes back to the staff to bring back to us again, and then we will vote on what is on it. Dr. Heil, based on your conversations with our students, is there anything missing on this, based on what you heard in interest, or any other district interests that you've been a part of?
One of the main things that is on there, speaking with Senator Farnett the other day, is the mental health. Every student kind of addressed that, where some, whether it was anxiety or just wanting a chill room, just a chill room, where you can have, I don't know, whatever the LED lights are, and that you can go there and chill and just do some work, or do things like that. Another thing that was strong with the group was amazing, but it wouldn't work here unless they gave us money for it, but they wanted to mentor kids the next grade level down. So every student, like, high schools, like, well, we're right, like, PC is right next to Brooklyn Middle, they were saying they can go there, or ACO seniors saying they were down the road from Elm Creek. So it was just a mentor program that they were very much interested in, so. But we had just started, that was our first meeting, but the mental health was one thing that was brought up, because they were speaking to having multiple points of view, and each child was saying, it was out of 12, 14 kids, probably Eve was saying they had had, how should I say, some experience of being with someone with mental health, and how they can help with that point of view, and how they can help with that at their schools. So that's a strong one that's on there.
Valerie, do you know if MCEA is putting anything on their platform around unemployment insurance?
Yes.
Yeah, so just a full semester of note, people in community that are, who run summer programming are very concerned about unemployment insurance, and that that could have maybe an unintended consequence of adding a barrier to address shortage of staff. So I was just curious if MCEA was putting that on their platform. They are.
It's been a topic of conversation with the MASDA, too. We don't need to start those conversations till next week.
I presume it will be on the MASDA platform, too.
Are there any other significant items on the AMSD or MSBA platforms that we don't have included that we should consider, or that you think is, would be of interest of us to know about?
Well, both MSBA and AMSD do have an item on the platform regarding the terms and conditions of employment or negotiating regarding e-learning days and student-staff ratios. That was passed last session. And then, MSBA also has on their platform the short-call substitute teaching pilot. I don't know if this affects ACO or not, but there's a 200 daily rate that is a barrier for some districts to participate in that.
We're also not clear if that's funded, and how long that will be funded, for another mandate, or whatever, where you want to district.
I think that's it, and I was reviewing it earlier today, both of the ones I noted. AMSD does have a platform item, allowing districts flexibility under ESSE to reduce the number of acquired standardized tests.
Yes. I would like to add that one.
I would like that one.
I think testing is something we've talked about a lot. That was on our platform before. Yeah.
Let's bring something back of that nature.
The testing.
Yeah. Either what we had before, or to mirror the language. Are there any other board member interests? Are there any other board member interests based on those items, that discussion?
The only thing that I would say is we don't want to add too much. I agree, you know, we want to keep it a bit down to one page. But I, I think most of the stuff, like Thomas said, is stuff that we've talked about, it's unsurprising. I would like to see the addition of the testing in the SROs. And I don't see any language changes that specifically stick out as a concern.
Okay, then we'll move on to the next one, thanks everyone.
Thank you. Oh, except for just like on this part, there's just a space in confidence, just like a typo. Not a real issue, but.
But it was driving you crazy, wasn't it?
A little bit, yeah.
Just a tad bit, just a tad bit. We didn't do that on purpose. Alright, so we'll move on, thank you Valerie. You've been driving a lot today, drive home safe. So our next one, we have John again, John Morissette again on enrollment update, please.
Thank you, Dr. Howell.
You're welcome.
Okay, so tonight we'll do our annual presentation on enrollment trends and predict, predict, projections. Let me start that over. Enrollment trends are reviewed annually at this time of year in order to project enrollment for the next fiscal year and make new five-year enrollment projections. Purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide an overview of enrollment trends using, used in making our five-year enrollment projection model. These projections are important for decision-making regarding budgeting and staffing for the upcoming school year. So all the data we're looking at today is based on the most recent data we had. Sometimes in the past we've done November 1st, but we actually had it through last week. So we went ahead and updated to last week's information. So we've seen an update as of yesterday as well. Ironically, our enrollment went up 35 kids from last week to this week. Predominantly, we're seeing that in refugees that are coming in. So that number is typically our trend is we hit November 1st and then we start a slow, steady decline. And then as we get closer to the end of the year, it may sharpen a little bit. So this is a little bit unusual that it's grown still. But again, those are just trends that we'll keep an eye on. So the first two charts I'm going to show you today take a holistic look at enrollment. So they include pre-K all the way through K, 12. And then most of the time when we're talking about the number, we're just looking at kindergarten through 12, we drop pre-K out. Overall here, district enrollment for fiscal '24, which includes pre-K through 12, exceeds the last previous year fiscal '23 enrollment by about 114 students or six tenths of a percent. Additionally, our just K through 12 enrollment of 20,257 was at the time 281 students less than we projected last fall or negative 1.3%. In addition to students coming into Oseo schools from other public options, school choice means that some of our residents might attend options outside of our district. So as we're looking here. So categories here are the blue area is the residence enroll. Red is open enrollment that we brought in and then green is just students that are in a tuition status either in and out as we're sharing with other entities. So you're seeing our overall enrollment there, 40,556 and where those groups go. So I'll talk more about the open enrollment piece here in just a minute. So this chart shows our fall enrollment over the last five years broken out by elementary and secondary. Blue being elementary, red being secondary. Typically, a thorough analysis of our five-year historical trend is a very key component in projecting our future enrollment. Over the past several years, we've seen enrollment overall stabilize and grow specifically or more particularly at the secondary level, with the exception around the pandemic year. And enrollment is generally trending up for both groups. So Minnesota has open enrollment options available, also known as just general open enrollment. Families can make choices to enroll their students in public schools that are not the school district where they reside. Oseo area schools has consistently enrolled in somewhere between 1,300 and 1,700 students annually from other Minnesota districts. Our overall open enrollment declining by 12 students from the previous year to the current year and is currently representing about 8% of our total student population open enrolled into us. This is actually the first time in a number of years that we've seen that number decrease from previous years. Most of the students come from the Anoka, Hennepin, Rodandale, Minneapolis and Brooklyn Center districts. We do lose more, lose more students to Anoka, Hennepin, Brooklyn Center and Fridley, but we gain from Buffalo, Minneapolis and Robinson. Open enrollment numbers typically grow throughout the year, so that this is an appropriate and typically see it will climb a little bit more as the school year goes on, we'll keep updating and monitoring that.
Are we able to see it all, how many are, not that you can answer that this evening, that are part of Northwest Suburban?
I'll show a slide in just a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
So there's a couple of very detailed slides on here and I apologize because they're really hard to see on this, but they are in the packet, to dig a little deeper. The very first one is fiscal '24 enrollment actual versus the previous year. So it's to kind of show you the one-year change in each building, what you're seeing. So as an example, you see some schools like Garden City that have grown by 25 students over the previous year or Birch Grove at plus 37. And then you see others where there's a falloff. I think Palmer Lake is down 25, Basswood is down 22, Rush Creek is down 36. The highlighted numbers, the one circled in yellow are just the overall total. So overall, elementary over last year is up 67, secondary is up 307. And I think it shows a grand total down at the bottom of 235 up. The numbers coming down in that kind of other area are predominantly 279. And I'll talk more about that here in a minute. This next slide is a enrollment versus what we projected for this year. So the previous one was just finishing '23 into '24. This is what we thought '24 would be versus what actually are butts, butts in seats, as we like to say. So you're going to see a kind of a noticeable trend on this one. Overall, like I mentioned, 281 students lesson projection or 1.36%. Where you're seeing some consistency, and especially if you look over to the left to the kindergarten column, there's a bit of a trend. What the trend is, is our kindergarten numbers are consistently down in the Maple Grove schools. So you're seeing that causing, say Basswood is down 50 kids, 26 at kindergarten, 18 at first grade and then a smattering in the other grades. I'm kind of seeing that trend. For a druck, I think the biggest difference there was, you know, we're having to somewhat guess on how fast houses are going to come in. And as inflation went up, that slowed things down a little bit. Although the trend is shifting, as I've talked with builders, what you're seeing and especially if you go to that Evanswood neighborhood, which is right next door to the new site where that will be, there's a lot of homes that are completely built that say this home's available, which you normally don't see in those developments. Normally you get to build your home from the ground up. And the reason why you're seeing more of them done as a spec home and build is the cost of lumber is expected to skyrocket. And so the builders are trying to take advantage and get ahead of it. So they're just building spec homes as fast as they can to get the basics done. They may not completely finish the inside, but they at least get the foundation up while they can buy lumber where it's cheaper. So there's probably 10 or 15 homes in that Evanswood neighborhood that are up that say this home's available or normally you would see, they wouldn't even start until somebody had said, yep, I'm going to buy that home and I put money down and start the process. So a little shift in trend is they're expecting that to go up. So we'll have to watch how that impacts us later and what that growth could feel like, just depending on, is that accurate or not? Questions on those before I move on?
Do we know other reasons, John, why the kindergarten trend would be the numbers down? Are there other factors?
Oh, that was Mickey.
Sorry, I lost. The trend, I don't, I don't have any specific data to say this is the reason why. We've talked to some people, but I don't necessarily want to say here's the reason because I don't have any factual data to back that up, I have rumor in any window. There are some thoughts that say some political decisions have received that shift because you'll see that people have moved to privates and private schools and perennials available in that area are plumb full. They filled up to capacity and so now they're looking to add capacity, which would have a negative impact on us down the road. I don't have any data to back that, so that's the only piece I would share to it.
As well as, we do have kindergarten down across the state too.
Yeah, yeah, kindergarten generally's down and we're starting to drift into that pandemic time where just births will down. So they went down a little bit for this next year and then they're supposed to draw significantly. So that might just be, I didn't really look close at the year prior, so. And we only get birth data on the county level. So I have no idea if births are down in Maple Grove and Brooklyn Park, but they're way up in Fridley and Moundsville, you know, or something, you know, catching our border or up at Even Prairie. You know, so we don't, we don't get, can't get the data that granular until we see kids actually. So a little bit of the detail in here, biggest impact on enrollment came in at the senior high where we were 64 kids over projections. Elementary came in 179 under. Middle level 21 below. Oops, sorry, my note doesn't click back. So 192 in elementary, I think I might have updated one slide and not my notes. But a little bit up and down, so especially when we're getting into OALC and 279 on line. 145 of that 165 is 279 of that maybe. Schools with a variance of 10 or more above projections. Birch Grove, Cedar Island, Fair Oaks, Garden City, Zangwood, Northview Middle, Maple Grove Senior, Oseo Senior, Park Center Senior.
We have any?
So we're seeing really consistent growth in the high school, which is a lot of times we'll get. We have a lot of charters that stop at eighth grade. And so we see a big jump that comes in in ninth grade and carries up. That's a lot of times what plays in here, which is nice to see those kids are coming back. But what can we do to provide a reasonable alternative earlier on? Sorry, Dr. Howell, you have a question?
No, that's okay, you answered your question. Will we see an increase in high school in the winter?
No.
No.
Typically, high schools.
Park Center and Oseo typically do. Maple Grove will stay static.
Okay, so now we're going to take a look at residents attending other schools but choosing other public schools. So this is only looking at other publics. Open enrollment into other districts increased slightly, 23 more kids this year than previously that went to other schools. Open enrollment into charter schools increased by 31 students to 37.85. So about 50 kids or so, not a ton, but a significant enough number to want to pay attention to. And then that red tuition number, that just kind of offsets the one from before, they go back and forth. So when you're looking at residents choosing public options, that one of the things we'll do is say, okay, if you, if you attend a public school, but percent goes where? But percent stays with us, that's the blue bar. So today, 74.2. But if you look across the graph, you know, in 1920 it was 76, but we've been pretty consistently in the 74s for the last four years. The red column is who's going to charter schools. So we're slowly seeing an increase in that number. And then the green column is open enrollment leaving our district going elsewhere. Again, we had, we had a little bit of a spike in 2021 and it came down again a little bit, you're talking ten so percent. And then it's, it held, started coming down a little bit and so it's kind of holding pretty flat in that area. So charter schools are, we seem to have consistently got our number pretty well set. It's, or I'm sorry, open enrollment out, it's the charter schools that are moving a little bit. We tend to be losing a little bit to charter, but our open enrollment out is pretty stable. That number going all the way back to 17, 18 is 76%. So again, we're pretty, just a little bit, it's trended down a little bit over the last six years, but not too bad. Specifically, where do they go? And so this is a good example, those when you're looking at this chart on the left that have the asterisk are Northwest Suburban integrated schools. So a little bit more detail here, this is the list of school districts where we lose 60 or more, more students. But choice can go both ways. So you kind of see off to the right, the previous net gain or loss and then the 24 is our, how many, the specifics, how many we lost, how many we gained. As is always standard, Minneapolis can't provide us a number until sometime in the middle of the spring, so we have to guesstimate what that number is. That's three years straight that I've had to do that and guesstimate that number. But what you're really seeing right now is Buffalo, Minneapolis and Rodandale are gaining very slightly. But overall, it's, we net lose 600 kids to open enrollment.
And do we know how much are going to, those actual magnet, magnet programs or not?
Yeah, we can get the specifics on it. I think we'd have to go talk to enrollment in Northwest Suburban and pull that specifically. I don't think we've ever pulled that report out to say this, you're going through the magnet program. We'd have to request that data, but we can dig into that, it's a good question.
I'm just thinking 161 to Fridley, that's a lot. To a district that's not right next to us.
Yeah. The next one here is going to show which charter schools, same way and format. This is charter schools that enroll 60 or more students of ours. Again, we see kind of the net numbers off to the right and then the, this year's preliminary and increased decrease. Overall, 110 or less kids went to these charter schools, we're showing, there's a few more that went overall. So and if that little blur down at the bottom, we send students out to 84 different charter schools. So stop and think about that, just our district, there's 84 charter schools around us. That is a lot of choice that we're competing with. And that adds up to that 37.85, just a little bit of a decrease over the previous year.
One more question, John. Do we know how many end up coming back in the winter?
In the winter or just over?
Because sometimes they'll go for three months and then they'll come back.
It's, I guess we've never pulled that data specifically.
Sure, I was just curious.
They do, so this is our preliminary update and then we'll typically get another run of this that Infosys does for us.
Okay.
We can ask to say, can you compare the two? Just of note here, things, you know, Parnassus is normally, we've normally lost a growing number of kids to that. This is one of the first times we're starting to see that turn in the other direction. And that Athlos Leadership Academy, that's starting, you can see if you look back a few years, they had their high in '22 and now they're trending down fairly significantly. If they're down for us by 130 kids in two years, that's a pretty significant one.
The question about if we do see an uptick back is interesting because there are some school systems that feel that there are kids who do try out the charter schools and they get a huge influx back and then they lose those dollars. So that's actually been a topic of conversation, so it doesn't seem like we're seeing that happens here, but we're not sure.
You know, it's, I think charter makes it really easy to make what I would call a rash decision. You can, you're mad about something, you can jump. And you can jump right back three weeks later, a month later when you go, well, that was stupid. Maybe, maybe that's not the right term, but that didn't, that wasn't the right decision. The grass really wasn't greener on the other side of the fence, I'm coming back, I like it ahead. It just, it's so easy to move now that we see so much more mobility because of it. So then these numbers go like this all the time, up and down.
John, you may not be able to answer this based on the data obviously that you have in front of us right now, but is this a historic low for us in terms of students, losing students to charter? Like if, like, because I know this is 2020.
I mean, keep in mind, that's only the top ones that you're seeing here.
Yeah.
So the overall numbers.
I see.
About almost 1,000 more kids.
Yeah, okay, thank you for that.
No, we're, we're pretty steady, which.
Pretty steady, okay.
It's flattened, there's been years where Parnassus saw an increase, but somebody else might have seen a decrease. You know, as an example, I think that was two years ago, we saw that. Yeah, they went from 887 to 939, that was a pretty good move in a year for them.
I can ask a question, I'm sorry I don't notice, are any of these schools have secondary? Can I ask a question? I'm sorry I don't notice. Are any of these schools have secondary children?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, it's a very much a mix of what you're going to get. Some of them could be just elementary, some of them are going to middle, some of them are complete K-12.
It would be interesting though to Director Simon's, um, point to find out how many, because it's October first is the.
That's the official number of the state schools.
Yeah.
And they use that number to meet our payments to us.
Right. So it'd be interesting to see, um, you know, how many students come back after that October first, because we don't get the funding with them, right?
Yeah, we get it later. It gets trued up. Um, so all they do is pull October one number to say, okay, when we look at your, it's your ideas payments. It's the payment system they use for us. They'll then lock a number and say, let's say your number's twenty thousand students just for round easy. On October first, we're going to pay twenty thousand. So we run all the calculations for all your stuff based on those students, how many are E L, all those things. And then they say, now we're going to pay you ninety percent of that divided over twice a month to get us into June, um, to the end of June. And they hold ten percent and then they go, now we're going to correct. Now we're going to say, what's your final enrollment? And we're either, and we're going to pay you to true that number up to exact. So they just use October one as that, we're going to lock that number so we can start paying consistently, um, and do it across the state and then they true it up. So in most cases, they owe you more money than they pay into the next year to catch up. And, and we, um, from a financial standpoint, book that money back as, as a receivable coming in, um, because typically they haven't, they don't finish paying until about December and we've already done our offer. So we have to estimate what that is and we, we're pretty good at it. Pull that num, money back and set aside as money that's coming in that will cover last year.
That doesn't really hurt a district like this.
No, it's just cash flow. Um, if you, if you have a really low number. A tiny district, yes. If you have a low number, let's say, let's say you had a refugee, um, like hotel doing what, what we're seeing in, at the La Quinta or whatever, um, and you're a really small district and it started on October fifteenth. And all of a sudden you got an extra hundred kids, you don't see any of that money till the next year. So, yeah.
That's my school.
That'll make a big difference.
Yeah.
Hey, John, are we able to ever tell if, um, the students who never entered our system, so like from day one, they may have gone to a Christian academy or are we able to?
It's really kind of hard because those schools don't have to report.
Okay.
Typically, what we're getting is if we can get census data that those kids exist and were born and if they lived in our district the whole time, it's a little bit easier to get it. If they move in, it's a little bit harder because you don't know.
Okay.
Because they didn't show you residents from your birth certificate, where we pick that up as, as Head of M County reports it. So it's, it's those moving in that really kind of muddy their waters a little bit. And obviously in our case, we have areas where there's a lot moving in. Um, and we have areas where there are really all over our district where there's people moving in and that population's just changing. So you never know where a kindergartner is going to pop up, um, or fifty or four, so. Okay, so I'm going to shift this to, um, residents attending elsewhere that have made, made the decision to go private. Um, what you're really looking at here of the two is private or homeschool. They consider homeschool pretty much to be private, so, um, you're seeing the two here. So our number, uh, as a total is forty-two ninety-three. A little over two thousand sixty are in a private school and a four thirty in homeschool. So surprisingly, what you saw is our homeschool number went down fairly significantly over the last few years. Understandably, it had, it had a spike in the pandemic year and it's just kind of gently coming back down. But where you're seeing the spike in the opposite is private has gone up pretty noticeably. Between the tune of almost a hundred kids. So when you're looking at the specifics for non-publics, Marinatha, um, Christian has three hundred and forty-nine students that reside here, up thirty-eight this year. Saint Vincent is two seventy-nine, up eight. Um, and then, and this is just kind of the quick ones that I, I'll highlight. Um, Heritage Christian Academy, two thirty-three, down sixteen. Providence Academy, one seventy-two, down thirteen. Saint Alphonsus, sixty-six, down twenty-five. That's a pretty big percentage swing.
It's huge.
Ave Maria, this is a, a pre-K through eight Catholic, eighty-five, down sixteen. Totino Grace High School, ninety-nine, up twenty-one. So it's a twen, more than a twenty percent increase than what we're sitting. And then Benild is sixty-one students, up twelve. Um, other non-public in general, um, which is just a category of a bunch of small ones, up eighty-three. There's a hundred and fifty-two kids, but up eighty-three, picking a lot of really odd new ones. How I mentioned eighty-four charter schools, right? Fifty-nine private schools we have kids, but. I, that shocked me a little bit that there were that many. Okay, I'll keep us moving. Um, so overall resident capture rate, so this is where we're going to take a look at every student available who resides in our district, where do they go and how many of them do we keep? Um, so our capture rate for this year is sixty-seven point six percent, so roughly two out of every three kids we keep, or we lose one out of every three kids to either, um, open enrollment out charter or other, which is private or tuitioned out.
Can I just, um, ask a clarifying question? That's of the ones that we know about their existence to begin with, though. Like, we, you were just saying there's people that move in, so the amount of students that are residents that we can account for are only the ones that we have that data for, not necessarily people who've moved in and haven't registered in our district?
But the caveat is if you moved in and are in that in between a birth before you register for school somewhere, that's the only place that falls. Because the second you, so let's say you re, you live here and you register for school in Fridley, uh, they register you as, oh, your address is.
No, I'm talking about private, sorry. So if they reg, if they move here and they immediately enroll in Providence or Marinatha or whatever, then we may not have that data, so.
No, but we, we go ad actively, we see that out. So we go call Providence and say, how many of our kids do you have?
Okay, so we do have that information.
We do our best to, they don't all answer the question, but to be fair, some of them are very, um, helpful and some of them are absolutely not. So, so it's, it's our best guess is probably the best way.
Okay.
But it's for the most part pretty accurate. There's only a few that are different.
The state tries to get this really accurate as well because there's funding tied to resident pupil versus.
Yep.
That, well, that's kind of what I was wondering about. Thank you.
So this number again is held, um, you know, dipped in twenty-twenty-one, but other than that, it's held pretty much steady since. So now when you look at just kindergarten, um, so the, this is easily the most difficult grade for us to project, how many kids we're going to get. Historically, we use that live birth number from Head of M County, um, and traditionally we get between fifteen and sixteen percent of live births in Head of M County live within our district or come in. So last year, we, we improved slightly in a year by about six tenths of a percent, um, this year versus last year. And then we'll kind of continue on the kindergarten bandwagon here. Um, and this is actually probably, to be fair, one of the more concerning slides I'm going to show you today. Uh, this is our kindergarten capture rate, which is currently at fifty-six point three percent. So down three, almost three and a half percent over the previous year. Before that, we were consistent, we had fifteen-nine sixty. So this is the first time in a long time that we've taken a dip. And that's obviously very concerning to have that much movement and, and we see that in specific schools on that slide I showed you that had the variance. We're just noticeably seeing that, um, our projections for, uh, the schools in Brooklyn Park, Brooklyn Center, um, in the middle schools, we were just about spot on. It is, it is Maple Grove Elementary Schools and specifically kindergarten where our number is noticeably down. And that makes up more than half of all enrollment discrepancy that we have coming forward. That, I'm not sure how to correct, um, you know, we'll do our best and what we can for the, the next year going forward, but a three percent drop in kindergarten is a pretty good get.
John, good question. Do we know, uh, there's also a lot of development happening in Anoka Head of M.
Sorry, can you say that again?
There's a development happening in Anoka Head of M and from the other surrounding, uh, districts as well. Do we know if they are building new elementary schools to meet those needs?
Um, I, Anoka and maybe Kate could answer because I know Anoka built them and I don't know where they are.
There are ones in line and one in line two.
Okay, so Ramsey's gets closer to us, but not, not that, so the other side of the river.
I'm trying about like the B maybe.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, all around there, yeah.
So just west of us is really this huge mashup of districts. There's all these pieces that come in.
Yep.
So right at the corner of essentially Brockton Lane, one oh, is that Brockton? Yeah, one oh one and eighty-one, you have Anoka Head of M on the top, we're right here, Rogers is right here, Buffalo somehow comes all the way in here, you know, and then Rockford's right below. But so three of them right here and the new school we're building is within six blocks of all of them. So you're starting to see development go there? Is Buffalo going to put a school out there? No.
No.
That's not going to happen. They have talked to their, their, um, staff up there and, uh, I, I know their business manager well and he said, he goes, we pretty much write off anybody on that side because we know, we've got this little sliver that's us and it's never going to support a school, so we assume we're going to lose all those kids to open enrollment. So it's an opportunity as our school opens that we could see people who want to come in, or if we get to the point that, okay, we open this new school and Fernburg doesn't have to be restricted anymore, that we could allow that. I don't know from Anoka Head of M if they would put it on along in Dayton, if there's, if there's enough capacity there or where those kids would go. Um, I know there's some developments there or, uh, we were looking because the property line or, or the dividing line for our district in Anoka Head of M is literally runs through the middle of ten properties. So there's going to have to be a decision or depending on in the property where the house sits.
Where your child's bedroom's at.
Sometimes in the past, we would say, where is the, the primary bedroom of the house, where is that fall and that's the district you're in. But with a new development like that, a lot of times they'll for one time and one time only allow the person to petition to say, you can pick Anoka Head of M or, or Osseo. But it's one, so you could literally get, I'm Anoka, I'm Osseo, I'm Anoka, I'm Osseo going up the road.
My neighbors in a different.
And that's kind of the answer right there.
No, no, it's, 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 there's, it's really kind of dumb because they should have adjusted the properties to match, but that's how the development of the properties. So we don't have ten specific parcels that they're developing now that are a concern for that, but, um, for the most part, I'm not aware of another school that's planning to come anywhere around this right there. Uh, we know, we know Wazetta's built out, so that to our, to our southwest, um, every, anything they were going to do is, is farther west. And they, I know they own another piece of property, but it's meant for a middle school. It's off on fifty-five and in Hamel almost. So it's a long way from us.
So we just learned why we are at like within one percent of our enrollment projections because John knows down to those ten.
That's children's bedrooms are.
John spends way too much time looking at all the sliding permissions that are trying to correct.
So, um, as I'm looking at all of this data, the one thing I keep thinking of is when we initially were seeing, well, actually before COVID, we were starting to see a little bit of a decline in enrollment, um, for the overall capture rate. Um, and obviously there's nuances, things change by ten kids here, ten kids there for different things, but, um, and this, we had expected to have a recapture rate after COVID. COVID's over, we're pretty much exactly the same. And now we have this, this big decrease. I, what I'm concerned about is how is that affect us? Because like everything is tied to our enrollment, right? All of our funding is tied to enrollment. What does this look like for our future here when we look at this information?
Yeah, and that's so, and I, I'm going to show the next slide, it'll show it a little better. Um, so if you look at the, the orange bar here just for next year, so right now we're forecasting, this is still our draft projection, the fourteen hundred and forty-six kindergartens. Now compare that to the number of twelfth graders. So actually, look, look at your fiscal twenty-four, then go back one row to twelfth graders, that's seventeen eighty-eight. So we're going to graduate out and lose seventeen hundred and eighty-eight students, but replace them with fourteen hundred and forty-six students. So that general negative trend of three hundred kids is concerning. Now, do we make it up because of decisions to charter or private that then come back to us in grade nine where we see that spike? Because if you look at our grade eight numbers, we're at fourteen hundred and then our grade nines jumped to three hundred. So we make it up, um, but it's really hard for us to predict, is that going to continue or not? If that kindergarten one, like the next year over in twenty-twenty-six, it goes down to twelve thirty-eight, so that's the big COVID dip. That's when the enrollment dropped by a fi, to a fifty-year low. I have to predict that down based on what we know. The only thing that drives that number back up to why we get to eighty-four kids positive at the bottom and not three hundred and eighty-four is growth. If, if we wouldn't have had the dip, I think the growth we have coming in would push our number into the three hundreds now. But that dip is what's playing in there. And you see that flatten for a couple of years. Now, when you're looking on this and, and, and jumping a little bit off my thing, but that's fine, the, the, hey, wait a minute, we're going to decline in the last two years. What we know for the housing units, the fifty-five hundred housing units that are coming in right now, they're all built out by twenty-twenty-seven. So we pretty much are, are just scraping the end to say, oh, the last ten percent are in those last two years. So I don't want to artificially think there's going to, I'm guessing there's more coming, but I don't want to predict it until I see something tangible.
So I want to hone in on that. So you do not have the projections from development in this? This is the organic growth or you do have?
No, this hasn't.
They have some, okay, but it's conservative?
Uh, no, it's, it's just a little more front load in it based on what we don't. So we, we kind of have to guess, so I'll, I'll go to the, the Evanswood Development as an example. Um, it's, there's about forty homes that are up there right now, but about fifteen of them are spec, nobody lives in them. We have to guess out of the two hundred and some homes they're putting in that area, how fast are you going, how many of those homes are going to be occupied by the time we need to put a kid, three tenths of a kid, of an elementary kid into school? When is that going to be occupied? So we have to kind of guess at, and we talked to the developers, not just me guessing, we say, how fast do you think you're going to be built up? And they go, over this four-year period, we're going to go ten percent, forty percent, and they, and they, so we model that in for the school to say, that percent growth, we're going to pick up kids by that percent growth. And so we grab all of the different developments and say, where do you think you're going to fall? And we churn them out, um, to be able to, to feed this in. But in every one of those cases, they don't go, well, I think we'll be working on this development for six years. If they want to get in, get it done and get out. I mean, their mind. So we don't really have a lot of development, but the fifty-five hundred homes that I'm aware of right now, um, pretty much are wrapped up by twenty-twenty, you know, seven, twenty-eight right in there. Um, by the way, that number from last year is up from thirty-eight hundred to fifty-five hundred. That's, that's new developments since. The thirty-eight hundred number originally was over four, but it comes off, we take off once that's now developed and those kids are in. So, so that number can drift back down once we start taking developments off. And we actually had one that was a couple hundred apartment units that didn't get funding, so it fell off.
So John, to clarify Tony's question, we factored in known developments that are in planning, so that doesn't necessarily.
Or construction for that.
So that doesn't necessarily include open tracks of land that still could come into development?
No, and that's why, um, you may have heard in the past that we've used the term of eight, eight to ten thousand new housing units. We're at about fifty-five hundred right now that we know of. But we also know of tracks right next to the new school and in that area specifically, and places in Brooklyn Park, too. I mean, you go up to the, what is it, the Severs Corner Base, that area, that all sits in our district and that is undeveloped land. Now I would expect when they develop it, what's right on one sixty-nine will be commercial and then they'll put townhomes behind it, so you'll get medium density. They may get to single-family homes, but that's traditionally how they do it, by a big road. Is they'll, they'll kind of fill it like feather it down before you get to single-family homes. But we're seeing more townhomes and apartments by a long shot.
Maybe all of Boston Scientific employees will move in from everything they're building.
That's a big.
That is huge.
People who want to lift up, get townhomes, but that's taking off rates because of the rent rates. Yep, the rates are high, so a lot more rental homes and Maple Grove has allowed it, so.
And that was my question. So if rates are high and you've got, and you've got empty houses right now that are probably going to be slow to fill, do you know what the, what the average price is there? Because like.
Those are in the six hundred.
So that's going to be slow to fill anyway. Um, how does that measure up to some of the other housing development? Do we have more low-income housing coming in or?
Um, they're starting to bring more. Yep, that, that we're starting to see, um, the trends even in the, in Maple Grove, starting to try to address that a little bit better, where Brooklyn Park has been a lot better, a lot keeping that very balanced. Um, Maple Grove hasn't, but they're starting to realize that they need to. What you're really seeing in Maple Grove, we even put a moratorium on it for a while, is, um, developers that would say, I'm going to put in, there's a tract, um, it's right off Jefferson Highway, um, and almost six-ten, they put in twenty-eight single-family homes. Jefferson Highway, and almost six-ten, they put in twenty-eight single-family homes. They were intended to be sold as single-family homes and the developer changed their mind and said, "You know what? I'm going to rent them." So they built them all, put them all up for it. So that changes the dynamic a little bit because it changes our projection for normally that mayor may bring in, number one, a lot more mobile people, but typically less students too into a rental property. But I think that's starting to shift as well because it's just becoming more common. Developers realize they can make more money long-term, fronting the money, building the houses and renting them to you than maybe selling them to you. They don't like it. I think it's a lost opportunity for families to be able to build a generational wealth that you could pass along because those developers are saying, "I want to keep them in." Those rents are cost the same as a mortgage if not.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It doesn't really change the socio-demographic.
They just don't have the credit score.
No, but you're just, you're taking away that opportunity to say, "You rent, you're not getting any out of it, you have a place to live, but you're not earning something long-term." And it seems to be a trend, it's, we call it a concerning trend that we're going now. So, um, so what you're looking here is our, is our current projection. I know we've kind of glossed over it a little bit, but so for next year, we're today conservatively projecting twenty thousand, six thirty-five, an increase of three seventy-eight or one point eight seven percent. And then we'll see the out years as they come in. Now, as we get a little bit more information, this was done pre-referendum, so there are some changes. And what we'll probably have to do is put two versions where we're still going to approve this style as the main version, but once decisions are made going forward, then we'll start to show those things. And we'll probably, for consistency, do not hold up the staffing process or anything, want to keep that rolling. And then maybe in the next years, we'll adjust to start to show some of those changes where you'll start to see a new school pop in the future and a repurposed school pop off and those types of things.
John, are we planning on trying to capture why we lost kindergarteners?
We have been trying to figure out the data and pull on it. I know I've been working with Gerald and Information Systems a lot to find, try to find out the detail. It's very difficult to get. The only thing that we can find is that specific private schools that service the western side of Maple Grove went up noticeably in enrollment. Most of them are very parochial small schools. And I know a couple of them, I don't remember offhand the name of the one, but like they filled the capacity and had to stop taking people. And they had a waiting list now for it. I'm just speculating if you're asking for a reason.
John, as we look at that, have we looked at any age trends so far coming out of the pandemic for families who decided to hold their kindergartner back an extra year? So their older-aged first grader now creating a bubble dynamic based on...
I don't, we haven't gone and dug deep to see the frequency of that. So in order to do that, we have to stay with the exact, or the actual age. And I don't know if we have the ability to go backwards to set a baseline, but it's an interesting thought. I could drive Gerald crazy and ask him to look all that up.
You can tell him Anthony brought that one up.
I'll share that.
Go ahead to the list.
Well, I also wonder about pre-K options across the district and the cost of those. Just as inflation has gotten high, there's less discretionary funding for, you know, for families to pay for pre-K or those kinds of things.
One of the things, so we have, I want to say two hundred and ninety DPK slots in the district. And this year, correct me if I'm wrong, see, this year's...
I think it's three hundred.
It's close, it's right about there. This year's the first time we've come right up to the edge of filling all of it. The last few years, we've always had thirty, forty, fifty slots open. So it's nice to see that we're maximizing that. And then the state made permanent the seats last year. And then, and I don't know that the cycle, and I'm sure we'll get to it along with many other things that we're still getting, waiting for guidance, or it's coming. There's more coming. There's another...
More seats coming.
Is it two thousand or one thousand? I forget. I think it might be two thousand more DPK seats that will be allotted out to districts. And they have a process that they go through to say, you know, here's how you would get a chunk.
But that's tied to...
But that's an opportunity for us to say, "Yeah, we want to be able to try to service that many more kids."
Right, but that's tied to income?
Yeah.
And so what I'm saying, there's an income level, I think, of people that don't qualify for DPK that can't afford a pre-K. So if they go to a private school where they have a cheaper pre-K...
Sure.
Then they're going to stay there. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, a lot of times.
Right, did they ever get here? That's what I'm saying.
Typically, once you go somewhere, we'll, we want to stay unless there's a really compelling reason not to. And if you can afford it, okay. Just wrapping up, so this is the, the trend line look, you know, as you're seeing, our high school and the red lines again. So history to your left, projection to your right, projecting that elementary's going to go down, but high school's still going to maintain for a while. And we go through this stuff very, very detailed at ECHMAG, which I believe is next week, to go deep in the detail, deep in the, compare it to all of our capacities. That's where the recommendations tend to come up from. So they're going to finally see this information side by side with capacity and then all of those updated trend charts that I put in here for you. So we'll dig into all of those in that process next week. So next steps here are, we'll finalize our grade and second level enrollment projections, which is typically done in January. So then that information can be provided to the BLTL and HR teams for staffing reasons. And then they start their staffing process and use our target class size data to determine how many staff that is for each building, at least as a baseline, and then make decisions going forward on that. And again, I mentioned ECHMAG. I think that's it.
Can we go back to...
Nope, there's no room.
Um, 279 Online. Our enrollment is really low. Can we talk about that?
Yeah, we're at, this is just a variance. Three hundred and eighty-five, did something like that, probably? I'm just talking to my head trying to remember. It's still through this year, at least a strategic priority that the board decided we wanted to have, but do we have clients to look at it? And yes, but, but again, I'm, I'm not the expert on that. I'm looking at data. There's other things and a lot of complicated factors behind it. So we wanted to make sure it's given the due process when we look at it. A lot of districts we've seen around us have made decisions to just cancel their programs. I don't, we need to study ours and decide what the right thing to do for the district is. Many have said, "We're just going to continue our high school level program, or maybe our middle school and up level program." Again, we, we haven't really had the opportunity to have that conversation and determine which direction we want to go, but that's on the docket at some point.
Yeah, I wanted to bring that up as a concern. While I think it's awesome for the kids in these classes that have such low class numbers, it's also considering class numbers being a major concern for our community that we have some classes that have ten kids in them and one teacher. And is that an appropriate way for you, us, to utilize the resources that we have in the lower grades? In the higher grades? Maybe there's more that we can do to change the program, but when are we going to look at this? And how quickly? One thing that I personally feel has been a trend in our district is, and this is no offense to you because you used the word, I'm just going to use it, we study things for a really long time. And sometimes I don't think that's the best course of action. So I want to know, what are we going to, how are we going to look at this? What are the factors we need to consider? And how quickly are we going to implement changes? Because these are real students and real families that are utilizing this service. And if it's something that we're saying, you know, maybe this isn't the right investment for us, giving them the most amount of notice to adjust their plans, I think would be really important. It wouldn't be something that I think we should just rip out from underneath people, but I also don't think we should sit on it when we only have a couple of kids in a class.
So what I will say is that we do recognize that and we have had intro conversations. We do need to study more and gather more data. The one piece that isn't captured in enrollment with 279 Online is it's also providing the 279 Excel program, which is the supplemental program that we have about seventy students in that are attending our comprehensive schools. So there's another group of students that aren't counted in what that looks like as a program. But like you said, one of the realities are, we've got three hundred students here that want online programming. So we change this and that's potentially a loss of three hundred students that we're collecting revenue on. So how do we nuance that? What is the right sizing of the programming and how we deliver services as well as understanding the larger market trend? As, you know, I was talking with Kate earlier, if you listen to K108, Eden Prairie Online every hour has an advertising that they're paying on commercial radio stations right now. So the market is very dynamic right now in the online space as programs are growing and contracting. And we're still hearing of other districts, mostly smaller districts, who had online programs that are now contracting them. And those families are looking for opportunities. So it's trying to understand what we can capture in the market share and doing a deep analysis of what's happening. Because the capture we've had has been primarily our own district students. It hasn't been open enrollment grown. We've got a, a large portion of open enrollment in there, but the majority of the students are our students within the district. We're seeing a trend of more interest in having either part-time online to be physically in school and having some different flexibilities, but not necessarily the whole online trend like we had coming out of the pandemic. But again, we've got to study more and gather some of that data.
Well, and prior to the pandemic, this was a board interest back then. So at that time, it was identified as potentially a weakness that we didn't have the online option and we needed to have, be more competitive in that space. So maybe it's, it's, to your point, it's a matter of if we still think that's a valuable offering and there's a market for it, what do we have to do differently to capture that market share? So, so I think it's probably less about our own students or whether it's going to grow or decline and what is the bigger picture for that being a competitive advantage here?
I think that's one of the issues. And then as Director Douglas was saying, it's time for us also to look again at right sizing the, the program. So the secondary, for example, is a hundred under their projected enrollment right now. That's a fair amount of kids. And, you know, we can have some staffing crunches in other areas, so it is time to look at just, and we can try our best to right-size it for next year.
And it'll be interesting to see as well for like the elementary, the eighty-nine elementary students, where, where's their homeschooling? So I'm just curious, is there a certain amount from Fernburg or...
Yeah, we can pull that, yeah.
You know what I mean? You know, so...
But there's also, you know, opportunities to then create creatively on how we actually run that programming. Right now, like elementaries run, staffed in a very traditional format where you have a K, a one, a two, a three, a four, and a five. What would it look like if you had a blended K1, two, three section cohort of students where we could build an actual class size and think differently? Because we don't have the traditional walls and brick and mortar structures that, you know, limit what we can do within that space. So there's, there's opportunity for innovation and creative thinking, you know, based on the data that we collect with how we're going to go forward with this.
But there does need to be an analysis real soon.
Also, there's the upstart cost into that, the flexibility that that system starts. Yeah, we've invested a lot in having that as an option for students. So I like the idea of if others, if other places are dropping, there's a really great place to capture students.
And I definitely don't want to, I don't know, insinuate, I guess, that I don't think we should have it. That's definitely not what I'm saying.
Yeah, make sure that gets on the...
Yeah, definitely not saying that. But I was actually going to suggest exactly what Anthony brought up was how do we combine, maybe combine some of these, especially these smaller classes? But one of them, like Tanya said, this was a board initiative, something that we were interested in, something I was personally interested in, particularly at the high school level, so we can provide more course offerings for our kids. So I really liked the idea of looking at it in a more innovative way and still affording those types of opportunities, not necessarily scrapping the whole thing. But also, it's really hard for me to see this and say, "Yeah, you know, we've got a teacher teaching nine kids when we have other teachers who are drowning."
Yeah. Well, like I said, at the secondary, what this, the enrollment numbers don't show is, you know, those seventy students that are taking supplemental right now, right now, we're taking supplemental with Northern Star Online and 287 was collecting that revenue, which wasn't ever captured in any of our enrollment projections, which is now coming in to help support that online programming. So there's other segments, at least in the secondary space, that...
Yeah, so that's secondary, right.
Need to be a part of the, the larger story with, with online.
Anthony, am I remembering that this is the first year of the full implementation of that Excel?
Yep, this is just the first year of just supplemental for just Osseo area school students with ten courses running.
Right.
So we've got a team coming back together again to examine the data of enrollment this year and what are the opportunities around that supplemental programming that we're going to flip the switch on and open up to any school district that wants to open enroll supplemental students in can, as well as have some of those conversations with building leaders of what are potentially some of those courses that you didn't ever get enough tallies, so you couldn't run it, but collectively between the three of you, we could put it in an online format and now we could run X, Y, and Z, you know, elective course potentially, because we'd have enough students tally for a course to run collectively.
Because when I tell people that we have lung heritage classes and Dakota classes in other districts, they're like, "Wow." So I just think we have some unique things we could definitely market. I'm preaching the choir, I understand that. Any other questions on enrollment?
All right, so just the last part is just for the board to know that we do have our twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four board meeting calendar in the folder for you to review. And, and I understand changes could be made throughout the year, so.
Okay. Any other comments or business? All right, this work session is adjourned at seven thirty-one PM.
Called it. Yay! Called it. Seven thirty.